... clock up there is a little slow, so it's 6 o'clock. We have the regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 17th. It's 6 o'clock. Our mayor is on vacation. I'm your vice mayor, so I'll be running the meeting. And our city manager, Dylan Feek, is also out of town. So Kathy Flampson, can I have a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Lopez Ortega, councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
Here.
And we'll note that Mayor Canning is absent.
He's in Jamaica.
Okay, if you'd all stand and please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the justice for all.
Got it?
There are agendas in the back of the room, if anybody needs one, to follow along. The next item of business is oral communications on consent items and non-agenda items. So this time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954 dot 3, the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issue or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes maximum so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. So is there anybody that would like to address the council during oral communications? And this would be a matter that is not on the agenda, other than consent items. I see you're all rushing to the podium. We'll move on to the next item, which is the adoption of the meeting agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Kraus.
Wow, starting with me today. Okay, well, I understand from the Public Works Director, Mike Kern, that they're going to be starting on the Lake Street resurfacing and doing a lot of other work over there related to replacing the water main. I don't know, the sewer main also, Mike, or just the water main? And the sidewalk, I think, is going to get fixed up and drainage issues are going to be addressed, correct? All that stuff? So portions of the sidewalk, okay. Your tax dollars at work. Thank you. Mike.
Councilmember Iris Lopez Ortega.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make a quick comment regarding spring cleanings in our houses. We know we all love to clean our house during the springtime, but we already in summertime. And a lot of people is just putting things out in the front of their houses. And I think, you know, we had a very beautiful town and they shouldn't be accumulating garbage in front of our houses. I know that somebody's garbage is treasures for others, but in this case, I think, you know, maybe a weekend will be okay, but if nobody pick it up, you know, they should pick it up right away. In close to the fairgrounds is being a mattress that has been there for about a month already and nobody's picking it up. So I think, you know, just be conscious and about your neighbors that it bothers them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes.
Two things tonight. I've been reading a lot in the papers, mostly the Chronicle and some other ones that I read online, about the great influx of scooters in San Francisco, San Jose, et cetera. And one of the articles I read was about scooter folks targeting tourist-related towns. I would like our staff to look into the possibility of passing an ordinance prohibiting scooters in Calistoga specifically from the hotels, motels, that give out bicycles. Bicycles are fine, no problem. They get in the way once in a while, but no big deal. Scooters, I could see a horrible problem in this town if they were to be rampant on our streets and sidewalks. So I would like city staff to look into that and see what we can do about that. I'm not proposing to ban little kids that live in Calistoga from riding their scooters. That would not be the intent whatsoever. And secondly, the same thing about plastic drinking straws. Much in the news lately. I would prefer if we could do that without an ordinance, get the restaurants, the hotels, et cetera, to just kinda, I know, I think you, Michael, have already done it.
I brought that up like a week or two ago, so we are implementing that.
Yeah, you told me that because you embarrassed me. Because I accuse Michael of not doing it, and he said, "Ah, we're way ahead of you. We did it months ago." I would like it to be done just on a voluntary basis, simply because it would help our environment, and I think it's the right thing to do. If we can't do it that way, then I would suggest some sort of ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing to add, so we'll move on to the city manager's report. And tonight, we have our finance director, administrator Gloria Leon, sitting in for Dylan Feek.
So just a little bit to add to what Mr. Kraus spoke about earlier, about Lake Street. So Washington Street to Fairway is currently being closed unless you're a local there who lives within that area. And it's closed from 8 to 5. And it's scheduled to be completed by mid-September, so then everything should be back to regular by the middle of September. And then also the Phase 2 drainage through the fairgrounds is just about completed.
Our next item is proclamations, presentations, and awards. We had a presentation of service award for Ben Zachariah for 20 years of service. My understanding is he called in sick? It's, I think after 20 years, you're allowed to call him sick?
No.
You're making him come back?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, for 20 years, he should come back. Thank you. So we'll move on from that item. So next, we have the consent, the consent calendar, items 2 through 6. Is there anybody on the council that wants to pull an item for discussion? And if not, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar is approved. So that takes us to our first of public hearings, item number 7. This item is a consideration of an appeal received from Sandy Tucker of the Planning Commission's denial of use permit 2018-5. So I would like to, I would like to proceed first with staff just giving an overview. Then I will open the public hearing now. I would like staff to provide an overview. And then I'd like to extend and let the appellant have an opportunity to address the council.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I need to disclose to the council and the public that I did spend about an hour with Sandy last week discussing this with her at her request.
Okay. I've had a couple of phone conversations with Sandy. Has anybody else on the council to discuss?
I, I had an email from the appellant requesting a meeting, however, on advice of the city attorney, I respectively declined to meet.
Okay. So after the appellant, appellant has a chance to address the council, the public will also have the opportunity to speak. So Lynn Goldberg.
Thank you. I'll give you a brief overview. Ms. Tucker wished to establish a real estate business on Lincoln Avenue because it was proposed to be affiliated with a nationwide chain called Next Home. She was required to apply for a use permit because she was considered a formula business. The general plan essentially prohibits formula businesses, especially restaurants and visitor accommodations. It does allow exceptions for formula businesses primarily meeting local residents and business owner needs. There are also, there's another policy I'll refer to in a minute that addresses them as well. The Planning Commission on a 2 to 1 vote denied the use permit. There's an excerpt from the Planning Commission meeting that summarizes their comments. And the applicant chose to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to the city council. There are three options included in your staff report of actions you could take tonight. One would be to deny the appeal, and that would have the effect of upholding the Planning Commission's action to deny the use permit. This option would be based on the following proposed findings, which I'll just generally outline. One would be a conflict with general plan land use policy P 1.1-1, which prohibits formula businesses unless they primarily meet local business residents and business owners' needs. There are three active real estate businesses currently operating in Calistoga itself, with many others in the vicinity. And the applicant has not demonstrated that there is an unmet need for these services. Furthermore, community identity element policy P 1.2-9 allows formula businesses only if they reflect Calistoga's unique small-town qualities and do not include common design elements found in other communities. The proposed business's signage, including the use of Next Home standardized logos and colors, would be inconsistent with this policy and therefore inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan regarding preservation and enhancement of Calistoga's uniqueness and urban design quality. Also, the proposed use would not contribute to or reflect California, Calistoga's uniqueness by contributing to the viability of its visitor industry and its tourist-based economy. Those would be some of the bases for denial of the appeal. A second option would be to uphold the appeal, and that would have the effect of approving the use permit. This option is reflected in the resolution that was attached to the Planning Commission staff report, and it's generally based on findings that the proposed use is resident-serving. If the council chooses this item, the council would need to direct staff to provide a resolution for adoption at the next council meeting. And then a third option would be to refer the matter back to the Planning Commission with direction for reconsideration. Staff is suggesting that regardless of which option the council chooses, it may wish to direct staff to work with the Planning Commission on refining the criteria to guide future actions on formula business use permit applications. Just like to note that the original formula business regulations were adopted in 1996. Since then, an application for a use permit for a Curves Fitness Center was approved in 2003. And there were certain made, findings made that it was a unique business that was serving an unmet need in the community. We are also currently reviewing a proposed Shell Service Station and a Loop Convenience Store at Foothill and Petrified Forest Road, so those would also be considered formula businesses. There is, there are five findings that have to be made in approving a use permit. And there's a special one, the fifth one, just for formula businesses, and that is it's a resident-serving business. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's much more background in the Planning Commission staff report.
Do any council members have questions of staff at this time before I allow the appellant to address the council? No? Okay. So Sandy Tucker? Hi, Sandy.
Thank you, guys. My name's Sandy Tucker. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak and bring this before you. I've been really struggling with what it is that I would say to you guys tonight, because when you're only given a few minutes to just fight for your livelihood, what, what do you say? So I figured I would start with the staff report, and I would go down the line with the different, some of the things that were brought up in it. One thing that I noticed tonight that I hadn't noticed before, when Ms. Goldberg was reading, was talking about the staff's report, and tonight they're requesting, they're recommending not approval during the staff, or the Planning Commission, staff was recommending approval of this and gave a number of reasons why it met the criteria to approve our use permit. The other thing that I think was left out of that, in case anyone doesn't have the background, I did go in, speak with planning staff about getting a business license for my business. I inquired about, we discussed the fact that there is an ordinance about formulas in town. I asked to read the ordinance. I was told that it was, it was forbidden. So I asked to read the ordinance. And I came back to with staff and said, "The way I read the ordinance," sorry, I'm really nervous, "lodging and food are prohibited, but formula businesses are allowed in areas where the zoning is appropriate with a use permit." At that time, I asked, "Should I schedule a time before the city council?" Was told, "No, you don't want to do that. We can find a workaround." So we made concessions with the, the front of my building that I wouldn't have signage, much like you, when you worked with Curves, you gave them very limited signage out front. For me, I was doing very generic signing. Then I was issued a business license. I was issued a building permit. I did all the renovations to the building. I licensed with the state of California. I purchased my franchise agreement. I did everything with the, the business license that I was issued from the city to a great cost. At this point, I'm at about $50,000 in, before the city came to me and said, "Oops, guest staff made a mistake. You really do have to go before the Planning Commission." So now we're a couple months further down the line. I went before Planning Commission. Staff recommended approval of my project. Not one person wrote a letter or an email in opposition to it. Not one person showed up at the Planning Commission in opposition to it. The reasoning the Planning Commissioners gave was it was such an important ordinance to the city that we have to really protect this ordinance. And even another Planning Commissioner said, "If this is so important to everyone, where are they?" There was not a soul there. But it was still denied 2 to 1 because two Planning Commissioners were recused that evening. So anyway, that's a little bit of the background that I hadn't intended to talk about, but I felt like I wasn't sure who has that information and who doesn't. Copperfields, one of the reasons Copperfields was let in is because they are independently owned and operated, which is exactly what, yes, in Next Home, we are independently owned and operated. I'm part of a, I do have a purchase of franchise agreement. And basically, they give us tools for technology. When this ordinance was written in the 96 and 99 and 2000, when the adjustments were made to it, the internet wasn't a big thing. Now, especially in real estate, it's a very big thing. And it's, most of what we get from Next Home are tools, technology tools and marketing tools, and that's it. Each one of us owns our, owns our own business. We run our own business. We decorate our own business. A lot of, a lot of questions have come up around the, the way they look, and they're cookie cutters. So I didn't have much time. I only read the staff report yesterday. But I did my sixth grade project here. Like, I'm doing my state report, and I have pictures of different, I have different decks of offices. None of them look, it won't be alike.
Sandy, Sandy, if you can, well, we want you to speak in the microphone because we do have a home audience that really looks, looks forward to this. Maybe somebody could, could help, help Sandy hold that, or that would be great.
Okay, sorry. In the center, I also had the gentleman who would make my awning. Just do a really brief gross mock-up, sorry. This is the front, this is the front of the building that we're talking about. That's been empty, so it still has Bill Nance's sign and everything. It's just a little clip that I took yesterday. But this, if you can see it, is what the signage looks like. All it is, is my logo on top of the black awning between the two doors. I'm not asking for any more signage than that. There are...
What's the logo? I can't see it from here. Does it say Next Home?
It says Next Home in the Valley.
Next Home in the Valley.
And I don't know if we want to pass that around, but you can see that the offices, we make our own decisions about what's inside. Nobody tells us how to run our businesses. Nobody tells us anything about how to run them. Oh, perfect. That's exactly what it says on there.
Thank you.
No dog.
No dog.
No dog. So, anyway, I'm losing my train of thought here. So Curves was allowed with the limited signage, so that's kind of where I went. On page 3, under option 1 of supporting evidence that my business is inconsistent with the general plan, Emily actually is going to show you some reason. She's going to point out exactly how it is consistent with the general, general plan. Also, it states that there are three active real estate offices in Calistoga and that I have not demonstrated that there's an unneed, unmet need for local services. I would like to tell you that I pulled up the MLS sheets, and there are 48 active listings, and active and pending listings in Calistoga. The local offices you're talking about have 10 of them. There is plenty of room for another agent to bring more 942 signs on those in front of the homes. There's a lot of 401/5s out there. There's a lot of other people selling real estate here. There's plenty of room for one more, if that's one of the issues at hand. One of the things, and one of the reasons, actually, there's, there's a lot of talk also about how important it is to preserve the history and the unique character of Calistoga. And I feel like I am part of the history of Calistoga. And it's not just about what the buildings look like. It's about, makes this unique when you walk into a building and people can tell you that, "Yeah, my first job was washing dishes in the back room in high school, and it was like one of the worst two days of my life." And, you know, I, my host, homecoming, I went to dinner across the street. All of that makes this interesting also. And after my discussion with Mr. Barnes, he had asked me what would make my office unique or add to the character of Calistoga. And it really set me to thinking for a few days, like, what is my purpose here? What brought me here? And I had a really interesting memory that I hadn't thought about for a long time. And when I was much younger, at the Calistoga bookstore, they had a big cat. If anybody remembers, the big cat that lived at the bookstore. And I would go in there all the time, and it just created this feeling that you were at home and you should just relax and you should read the books. And without even realizing that that seems to have been what has built my idea of what an office looks like. When I first got the, the idea to do my office, I purchased my office dog. So I have a little pet French bulldog that has his own furniture in the office and the, in front of the windows when people walk by, because they all love Buster, the little dog. My office is made up of seating areas, so people can come in and sit down, and they can enjoy the, one of the pictures here also is an illustration that was done on the walls in 1976. And the owners at the time did it to celebrate the centennial. And I'm having that restored. It's a, it's a depiction of all the highlights of the valley, the main wineries, all of that. People can come in and they can see the history. They can feel the history. There's no change in the outside of that building, except that somebody's actually in there, and it's not the same breakfast, lunch, and dinner stickers that have been on there for 20 years now. So, I don't, I think that's about all I have to say. I don't know if anyone has questions for me.
Unless anybody has questions now, you're, the council's welcome to ask them of Sandy. I can then allow the public to speak if you want to hear more from the public, and we can always bring Sandy back up to the, to the podium.
I also wanted to add that I did email you some cards, but I have the rest of them here today. I have a little over 100 cards, plus the emails and, and letters that were written to you from Calistoga members that, I, I know that one of the letters says that it's just my friends and family that, you know, think I'm a real nice girl, and I lived here before, so I should be able to have a business. They all understand the overlying picture. They understand the ordinance, and they understand that exceptions have been made before. I do have a question also that I haven't been able to get an answer from, is it looks like the business license for the RE/MAX was issued in 2006. And so I'm just curious about what the history is with that one, if I wasn't able to get an answer yet, but...
Can I answer that? I, I believe I sent you an email and said that the 2006 reflects when we put that piece of software in use. So everybody that was in business at that time has that same starting date. I don't have the original starting date of that business, so I don't know when it actually started. But when we input everything, that was the date it started with, so...
Okay. And I'm just curious, because I know that, and not anything to do with that one, but that, that particular person was doing business in Santa Rosa in 2004. So I'm just curious how that came to pass, that was it a building that, or business that already existed that was purchased, or what happened? And if that is something that happened since the ordinance, I would like that to be considered as well. So, thank you.
I do have a question for Sandy. From what I've read from the, the letter that we received from your attorney, what you've said here, a little bit of what I gleaned out of the staff report, you felt that based upon planning staff conversations that your business was going to be allowed to move forward. Is that correct?
Yes, when, as soon as I was issued the business license, I took that to mean that, yes, I was moving forward.
Okay. And between then and the Planning Commission meeting, I, I believe the city manager intervened? Is that...
He intervened a month to a month and a half after I had been issued my business license. And most of the renovations have been completed on the office, on my office by the time he contacted me.
All right. But this was a somewhat delayed decision on the part of the city to say that you were not conforming with...
Yes.
Or that your business was not in conformance with the formula business plan?
Yes. The initial, I believe it was May 14, somewhere around there, was the email that I got from Dylan. And it stated that they were not going to issue me a business license. And so I called him, and I was confused because I said I actually already have a business license. I've had it for some time. And so I think he did a little more digging, and we met the next week. And that's when we realized everybody was really on different pages.
Just for further point of clarification, did you know that you still had to apply for a use, a conditional use permit?
No. I was told, no, that I did not have to go to the Planning Commission, because if I were to change the signage, it would take me out of the formula. I don't know that they necessarily, it was, it was a way, a workaround. Everyone that I spoke with seemed to agree that as long as there was not the appearance to the public that there was a formula business going on inside, that I was allowed to have a website. I was allowed to have stationary business cards. Anything else that said Next Home on it, I just couldn't put anything on the exterior, which I agreed to and proceeded with that in mind. And then a couple of weeks after, so I took the business license, and I, I needed that to get my, my DBA through the state. So I used that to register through the state. I needed it to get my DBA, my fictitious name statement through the county. And I believe someone in town noticed it the third week that it was in the newspaper, being announced for my fictitious names, name statement. And that's when it came to Mr. Feek's attention. And that's when he contacted me. At that point, it had been pretty far into the process, and I was, needless to say, a little surprised by the halt. I did go in and meet with staff, and at that time was told that, "Sorry, it's too bad. Nothing, you know, nothing we can do about it. This is wrong. Don't have an opinion about why it's wrong. Just, you got to go before Planning Commission." So that was another month, and then Planning Commission was shut down. Now this has been a few more weeks. So basically, I've lost the summer in, in that office where I had intended to be open by June 1st, and here we are, being closed August. So that's, I'm just trying to figure out what I need to do to move it forward.
Okay. Thanks for that, Sandy. Did your attorney want to get up and address some issues?
Good evening. It's, my name's Emily Fisher. I'm with the law offices of Tina Wallace. And Mrs. Wallace apologizes that she was unable to be here tonight. She's busy preparing for a big trial at the end of the week. So I am very happy to be here and talk to you tonight. I want to be okay with protocol. Are we okay with time?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll keep it, I'll keep it succinct.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you've, you've heard Ms. Tucker speak from the heart about why she wants to open her office and how she's willing to meet the conditions for the permit. You've heard that there's definitely more room for local Realtors to do more local business. And you may have already decided how you plan to vote tonight, one way or the other, but I would just respectfully ask you to imagine for just the next couple minutes that Calistoga is the last hope for democracy, since who knows, someday it could be. And as, as keepers of the flame, you understand the need to consider all of the relevant information... information, uh, with an open mind so that you can make the very best decision for the people of Calistoga. And I trust you to do this. Uh, I know the letter I sent over late yesterday was quite long, so I'll just hit a few of the highlights. Um, the first point I'd like to make is that just like your decision, the council's decision regarding curves in 2003, or any other adjudicatory decision that the council makes, um, it cannot legally set a precedent for any other future decisions. Every permit application must be reviewed on its own merits. So whether you decide to approve Ms. Tucker's use permit or not, that decision will stand on its own and doesn't force your hand or breach the levy in any way. Past examples like curves offer, uh, guidance and help in making a decision or, uh, determining what conditions or concessions are appropriate, but it does not have precedent. Uh, second, Ms. Tucker, Tucker mentioned the staff report statements about consistency with the general plan. So I want to address that in a little more detail. Uh, her proposed business is consistent not only with the land use and community identity elements, but also with the economic development element as well. And just to go over some of those policy issues, um, the land use policy, P1-1-1, that the business must primarily meet local residents and business owners' needs. Uh, just a couple of points adding to what Ms. Tucker said. The city manager advised the city council in an email update, uh, just prior to the, the last planning commission meeting, that a real estate office is a residence-serving use. Uh, residence-serving businesses meet local residents' needs by, by default. Uh, next, uh, the existence of a need, I think is really best decided by consumers and by the people who are offering the services in the marketplace. Um, people enjoy having the freedom of choice and the luxury of choice and competition is healthy. So if there is no need, then the business won't be around for long and it's Ms. Tucker that carries that risk as the business owner. And finally, uh, Ms. Tucker took the initiative yesterday to find evidence of the local, of the local need, even though I haven't seen anything in the ordinance or in the general plan that would require her to make that finding. So I'm concerned that that would be an underground amendment to the ordinance if it were actually considered to be a requirement for her permit. Um, next, the community identity element, policy 1.2-9. Um, first, I just want to make sure that, that this is very clear since there's been some confusion around it, um, generally in the past, and that's that the formula restaurants and visitor accommodations are outright prohibited in the zoning code and the general plan. No exceptions, no conditional permit option, no McDonald's, never. Other types of formula businesses, however, must reflect Calistoga's unique small-town qualities and not look like businesses in other towns. Uh, Ms. Tucker already addressed and can further address any design issues or concerns. Uh, she's previously worked with staff on what concessions were appropriate and she's willing and able to use a design that will reflect Calistoga's unique small-town qualities. Uh, I'd also like to think that the community identity policy isn't just about the outer shell of a business, but that the spirit of the law would also be concerned with what's happening inside. And that part of, that, that's also part of the value and, and the uniqueness of the business. Um, and in terms of business activity, what could be more individual and unique than a home or a piece of land? Uh, her ties to Calistoga and, uh, her ties to Calistoga allow her to promote everything that is unique and special about living here. Uh, every realtor has their own perspective and experience to bring to the work. So giving the community access to another perspective on local real estate can only enhance the uniqueness of the town and promote its economy. So whether she has a Next Home logo on her building or not, there is no other real estate office in the world that would be identical to hers because the business all comes down to the realtor. She is the only one like her. If you were lucky enough to grow up watching Mr. Rogers or have a child who, who watched it with you, you know what unique really means. And I could break into song right now, but I won't. I love Mr. Rogers. Finally, one general plan element that hasn't been discussed is the economic development plan or element. And this says that strategies for development should focus on the city's strengths, including its small-town character and lifestyle, compact pedestrian scale and affordable housing stock relative to other Napa County communities. Uh, these strategies should recognize these assets while at the same time embracing opportunities for diversification. Uh, Mrs., uh, Ms. Tucker's business exemplifies these strategies. If you consider general plan goal ED-1, which is foster a diversified economy that will provide the city with adequate tax revenue and residents with entrepreneurial opportunities and a broad range of occupations. And also objective ED-1.2, which is expand economic activity in Calistoga that builds on the community's strengths and reinforces its small-town character. And I know that the, uh, economic development element also speaks to the development of, uh, new economy businesses that are focused in the technology and internet sectors and her business is very much in keeping with that new economy model. So in short, the proposed use is consistent with and promotes the goals and objectives set forth in the ordinance and all of the relevant elements of the general plan, and it complies with all the city zoning code requirements for a conditional use permit. Uh, as we've said, she's prepared to address and resolve any issues with the design. Uh, you were told previously that there are three options staff has, has recommended. I would humbly propose a fourth option, which is that we, we can get something on paper tonight. We, I, I have a copy of the, uh, the planning commission's previous resolution. We could get that revised to say city council, uh, draft up whatever concessions would work and, and get this moving forward. So I ask you to please grant Ms. Tucker's appeal and approve a permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions at this time from council?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
Um, when Mrs. Tucker, uh, speaks, she's, she say that she bought her franchise. So, um, I understand when you buy a franchise, you represent, uh, you know, a, a formula business. So how that...
That's a really good question. And I think, uh, in this case, I've, I've looked at the franchise agreement and frankly, not all franchises are created equal. Uh, this one, the requirements on the participating realtor are very minimal. Uh, there are minimal branding requirements, as she's already explained. Absolutely no policies or procedures that are required, no dictates for how they should run their business. It's all up to the realtor. So the realtor has to come with their own experience. They really just provide, as I understand it, um, technology and support, uh, for realtors to access a, a broader range of potential customers.
Any other questions at this time?
Are you aware of any, um, issues that there would be with, uh, the company that's done the franchise? If there was to be a slight name change, and I'm, I just not saying that this would be the name, but could we call it, could Sandy call it Sandy's Hometown Realty, for instance? And then when you get into the place, you find out it's Next Door kind of a thing?
I, I...
Or, or Next Home?
Yeah. I see you're, where you're going with that. I think there is a requirement that if she, if she does use a name, and Sandy, please correct me if I'm wrong. Sure. Okay. I'll let Sandy speak to that. She's read it more than I have.
That's actually not a question about Next Home. That's about the California Association, or not the Association of Realtors, but the, um, Bureau of Real Estate. As being a licensed professional, I have to live to their standards. And should I do business or advertise myself as a name other than what I'm licensed as, it's a $10,000 a day fine for me. So I cannot...
You gotta run the state somehow.
Business licensed or?
Not business licensed. I also have a real estate license. And so the real estate license, I'm licensed without, throughout the entire state of California. And I have to act accordingly to the name or the DBA that I am licensed under. So...
And cannot be changed? Or no? Cause you're, you're saying that you're, you're licensed with Next Home, so you have to be...
In order to change, it would mean starting over.
Okay.
Um, so everything that I've done so far would be pushed aside and start over with the state of California to get a new, um, it's actually, um, we formed a corporation. So Cola Group is actually the one that owns the name, the DBA license. And we would have to get a new corporate broker license through the Department of Real Estate. And that's another, whoever knows how long, but probably about six weeks to get started and, and then change all this signage and, um, by signage, I mean signs, yard signs and that type of thing, cause I've already purchased everything with the name already. Um, can I answer your question a little bit too about the franchise? Um, that was, that's one of the words that, the formula business. And I keep trying to find a really good definition for formula business and everything I can find online refers to chain stores. And it's very difficult because real estate is so different than a hotel or a retail store or anything. And it's not, you can't say, oh, you have to buy this type of meat and this type of bun and all of the kind of things that normally come with a formula store, you need to purchase your items here. Because as, as Emily pointed out, it's a unique business. Really the business is the realtor. There, there is nothing else. The thing that I like about Next Home is if there were a small-town business model, it is Next Home. And basically what you get from them, they are designed to take mom and pop, um, real estate companies and give them a network. If I have a question about something, say a fee structure in my office, I don't go to Next Home. We have a group of owners that we all have a private Facebook page and everyone shares their information there. Anyone who has a question about how to set up their business or how to bring in new agents or anything like that, Next Home doesn't tell us that. We cooperate with one another. It's a huge network that we say, hey, how did you handle this situation? And so we share that information back and forth. And that's what I was really drawn to about this company. Um, they offer a lot of tools to us. We're not, we don't have to take any of them. We can pick and choose what we want. We just know that they're there. Um, it's not that there are any tools that anybody else doesn't have. They just make it a little bit of a simpler process for us, so.
I, I have a...
We're sort of a formula light, I think is what we are.
I have a question for, for Lynn. Um, if there was a person in town who, uh, felt warm and fuzzy about Century 21 Realty and, uh, engaged Century 21 to, uh, sell their house, would there be a problem with Century 21 putting their logo on a for sale sign in the front yard?
We don't regulate those signs. We do not regulate for sale signs.
Okay.
And there's 38 of those signs around town right now.
Sure. No, I, I just wanted to ask that question because Century 21 is a company I'm, I've heard of.
Oh, and none of them are Century 21. But that's just as an example. That's, that's...
Okay. Okay. Um, I think I'm gonna let the public have a chance to...
Thank you.
...contribute here. So I'm gonna limit comments to three minutes, please. Um, obviously there's a lot of you. We're well aware that you support Sandy. So if you can, uh, try not to be redundant, repetitive and try to add to the commentary for us so that we can further this along and get to our, um, deliberation. So, do we have cards? No? Okay. So we don't have to be cards? So if there's anybody that would like to come up to the podium, address the council, you're welcome to.
Hi. I'll go quick. Uh, Jennifer Bryner. I actually, my husband and I own Fitness First in town. Most of you guys know that. Um, many generations Calistoga. My parents own a business. My grandparents have a vineyard. When we opened our business 15 years ago, most of Calistoga was locally owned and operated. That's, that was the cool thing. And even now, I mean, I go in the hardware store, you went into my dad, you go into somewhere, you know everybody in town. Lately, it seems like all the businesses opening are not from Calistoga. The corporations, the big resorts, which I understand the need for. We are a resort town. I get that. We need that. We need that money coming to town. I understand that as well, too. But here we have a chance to have another locally owned and operated business in town that will only bring money to Calistoga. We have a chance to have one more of us in town when we're fading away. We're not getting new businesses opened by us. I mean, I'm competing now with large resorts with their own gym. I mean, that's, that's pushing locally owned businesses out of town. And we're allowing these to come in because we need them, because we need that money. I get that. But here's the one shot we have to have one more business in town by a person who grew up here, who is family here, who is someone who knows everybody, who knows what the town was, what our history is, what we really are. The cool thing about owning a business here is that I grew up here. My great-grandma went to, you know, the high school here. I mean, that's what's really cool about this town. We know everybody. Everyone knows everybody. If you want to, whether you're working out or going to buy real estate or going to do dinner, you're gonna go do this from someone who's locally owned. And I think if we have a chance to add one more of those businesses in town, I think that we should take it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? And if you can, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Katie Serini, 69 Lerner Drive, Calistoga. I own Rena Mae Salon. My husband's Rick Serini. I'm sorry I took him from you all from CalMart. Um... I was pretty angry when we opened Far Nails in the beginning. I was very angry. I thought, how could they do that? We have so many salons in town and this is gonna hurt our business. It's been a blessing. I'm able to put all my overflow for her and keep her busy. And I'm really glad that she came into town, even though she is not local and she's not gonna hire a local person in her salon. So I think that if someone's threatened because another real estate office is coming into town, that it might hurt their real estate office, I don't think it's going to. I think it might push their realty's fa, their, their listings faster. Fresh blood's always good. So I just wanted to add that, that I, I think it'd be a, a nice fit for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? And please, please state your name and address.
I'm Joey Lewis and I actually live in Lake County in Clear Lake at 37th Avenue, uh, 95422. But, uh, anyway, I wanted to get up because I've actually sat in your seat. I did a term on the city council there. Uh, and, uh, you know, I know, but I came across issues like this that are a little frustrating. Uh, but I want to tell you about Sandy because I've known Sandy for better, over a decade now. Uh, we were counterparts managing wineries and she was, uh, wonderful to work with in that scene. Uh, I did, uh, a lot of time working for the chamber up there, uh, and served as president. She was great to work with then. Uh, and then when I was a councilman, she was also great to work with. She's professional and, uh, I understand because we worked on our general plan that there are certain areas of the city you wanna keep character, you want a certain use. Uh, and, uh, the reason for that, you don't want like the Dollar General scare or the McDonald's or that, uh, you wanna keep that character. Well, one thing I want to lo, lobby you to, to, uh, remember is the person is also a big part of the character in a small town. And I can attest to you that Sandy will bring great character to Calistoga if you allow her to open her office here. And, uh, I really, really support you in doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Former council member Placido Garcia.
Again. Yeah, Placido Garcia, 1127 Mix Drive, Calistoga, uh, California, 94515. Uh, yes, I wanna, I still wanna, uh, thinking about it in the paper when they denied the permit for this real estate office. But I was thinking, I don't know, formula business was the base of formula business. Formula business, part of me is a business or corporation that come to town and suck the business in the town, local business. Second, business could come and bring more traffic to the town. It's not. The only one is bring more water problems because they... The only one is bring more water problems because they want to use it more water than we use it right now. It's not. The only thing this business comes to serve the people of Calistoga. I don't see any reason to deny, because formula business is the, those points I marked before. But this is a small office. Try to put business in town to serve the people of Calistoga. But on the other side, if you drive your car all over Calistoga, you see a lot of signs, the business, the already, formula business, selling houses in Calistoga. What is the reason? Well, they have the right to come and sell houses. Maybe they only call the agents. But this office, real estate office, to come to make business like all the office, real estate, local business over here, Calistoga and all the ones. That's the only thing it's going to do. And don't get any damage, any change the image of the town. You want to bring more problems, the other ones, but it's not. I don't see in my mind, I don't see clear something, the real, it's a problem to say no. I think so. Just place everything over to you. Please, there's another program, other projects that come to town. They're really going to bring everything up to change the image of the town. Local like Taco Bell or McDonald's or In-N-Out or those, really, it's changing the image of the town. All of the big corporations that can invest more money, the hotels and everything, it's going to change. Plus, the cost of living is going to be up for the local people, high against housing, and in favor of the housing. Against, big corporations that can put, make a lot of houses for sale for, not for affordable, for the people, local people, people from outside. Because the local people cannot buy a house for a million, million and a half or nine hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, no. We need something affordable for housing, for the local people, for the outside people. And then I come already from what we're talking about. But I see this is one of those things I, we had to take care, especially the council, you got a responsibility to try and find solution and keep the image of this town. I feel like we start losing that something there. We start losing it, but I know the council got the responsibility to keep the town the way it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Placido. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Not seeing anybody. City Attorney Rudin, I should close the public hearing and then have discussion amongst the council.
I would recommend providing an opportunity for the appellant to rebut any issues raised during the public comment period.
Okay. At this time? It's all, it's all, they're all on your side. Okay. You're welcome. Okay, so I will close the public hearing. I can always reopen the public hearing. We'll have some conversation here amongst the council members, further questions of staff. So why don't I start with Councilmember Lopez Ortega? Would you like to lead us off?
Well, you know, I see that this is, we have to support our local people, you know, when they want to do a business. I just don't want to risk any, any of the regulations that we already had on place, you know, like allowing her to open her business. I don't want to open the door for other people later to come and say, oh, you approved that, so we should, you know, you should approve my business. I want to open a, done a place that it belongs to a franchise, you know? So I'm completely supporting her, you know, that want to open her business is great. We need to support our locals. As I say, I just want to do it the right way. So I will expect, you know, some guidance, how to do it.
Okay. Councilmember Barnes?
Yeah, this is a, this is a tough one. I did some research. I met with Sandy. When I met with her, I asked her if I could have a copy of the franchise agreement. She said she would see what she could do. That was, I believe, last Monday or Tuesday, Sandy, we had coffee? Well, I got it today. It's 43 pages long and I spent a few hours reading it. I also pulled it up on the internet. First thing you see on the internet is franchise. We talked about that a little bit. The way it's worded in the mission statement, it says 40 years of experience. Come to find out that that is not true. The owners and the originators of this company have 40 years of experience. The company itself is somewhere between three and four years old. The experience behind that three or four year old company is 40 years. It currently operates under two names. Realty World Northern California and Nevada, RWNC, and Next Home. It offers and manages real estate franchises and markets throughout the United States. As of October 1st, 1917, there were 152 Northern California and Nevada franchises and 203 Next Home franchises for a total of 355 nationwide, operating in 14, 40 states. This is a true franchise operation. There are two close by. There's one in Middleton, in Middletown, and one in Santa Rosa. Questions I have, and I have some legal questions, which I think we could maybe address later on or maybe in some other fashion. I'm not a lawyer. I got a lawyer's letter this afternoon after I spent the morning reading the franchise agreement, and there's some things in there I don't understand, legal terms, and I would need help with that. There's a way to do that. Having read the franchise agreement, 43 pages of it, as many of you know, my background is insurance, so I've read many, a long, boring contract. And this is another one. But some of the things I read bother me. I'll just give you the outline of some of the paragraphs. Branding guidelines, franchise material, marks and trademarks, no protected territory, standards and specifications, franchise materials, advertising fund, use of trade name and marks, changes in trade name and marks, site development, signs, compliance with franchise materials, services offered and goods used, suppliers, use and display of trade name and marks. And finally, the one that really got me is information collection. Franchise owner of this group owns the information that is collected by the local agent. And if I read this correctly, they can do with it what they want. So if I buy a home, Sandy, Next Home, I'm filling out voluminous papers, name, rank, serial number, bank account, et cetera, et cetera. Next Home owns that information. This is a true franchise. This is not a formula business. I have some serious reservations about this, but I am open to talking about it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Cross?
Yes. First of all, I'm, like anybody that's an elected official, always impressed by a lot of folks that come out to support a particular position. And I don't blame you at all on this. I would suggest that if your franchise or business had been approved, we probably would have had a few people in here objecting to that because one of the things that a lot of people that I've talked to over the years in Calistoga are concerned about, and that is intrusion of franchise businesses. And they're usually talking about McDonald's, Kentucky Fried Chicken, Taco Bell, you know, all the, you know, all of the businesses that might fall into that. So I, I cannot fault the planning commission for any decision that they made, because like I say, I have a hunch that it probably would have came back up here to the council anyway. I'm concerned about the ordinance itself. And as has been observed, I think it's, what, 30 years? Six, was that when it was put into place?
Yeah, six or seven.
Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, almost 30 years. And times change. They're computer systems now. So I think at some future time, probably sooner than later, we need to tinker on that, that ordinance and make sure that it will stand up to modern times, kind of a thing. So I, I had some of the same concerns that Jim had. Jim's much more thorough than contracts. I think I've told you before, I read a contract, I fall asleep. But I'm not sure, you know, what Jim is concerned about is the collection of information. You know, basically every time you turn a computer, somebody's getting your information about something. You know, I can, I can go online to zillow.com and find my home, how many square feet are in it, how much I paid for, for property tax, get a aerial view, a front yard view, you'd know what kind of a car I drive. I mean, you've got privacy in this world anymore. So the collection of information, while concerning to a lot of people and myself, isn't an overwhelming negative on my part with this. One of the things that I am concerned about is you were under the impression from the city staff that, that this was going to proceed. And I'm not faulting Lynn or, or anybody in the planning department or like that. They were following what they felt was the correct procedure on this. What my concern is, and he's not here to speak this evening, is the city manager, whom I'm under the impression made a decision somewhere along that this business didn't fit the formula business ordinance. So he's not here right now to speak to as what was on his mind when he made that direction. So we can't cross-examine him. But that notwithstanding, I agree that your local serving is local serving as certainly the in is. You know, we don't keep people out of restaurants because they're from out of town, and this is supposed to be a local serving business, kind of a thing. So I'm not opposed necessarily to this, to granting an appeal here, but I do want to hear from Dylan, since he seems to have been part of the decision and the information that the planning commission used to, to turn you down. So that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. Let's see, I have a couple questions of Lynn. And the, well, I first want to say, if this decision was about Sandy Tucker, it would be a slam dunk. So this is not about Sandy Tucker, really. We all, we know the history. You're the nicest person on planet. We want you in Calistoga. But I think really it's about protecting our ordinance and protecting the future. If you make exceptions, small exceptions for one, the next guy in line might be something that we as a community don't want. And so we have to be careful. My question is for Lynn, is when I read the planning commission resolution, I, I don't see a clear set of conditions. So were conditions offered when this came before planning commission? Because if, if the council agrees that this is a resident-serving business, how they operate as a franchise or formula internally, I don't know if that really matters, because what we're concerned about is everything from the outside appearance and also the inside appearance, so that it doesn't give the impression that this is a formula or franchise business. So just for example, we don't allow formula restaurants or hotels. So let's just say Four Seasons, for example. Four Seasons can operate internally as a Four Seasons, but they cannot have signage out in front that says Four Seasons. So the reason why we give an exception for other businesses is because we have, if there's a need in the community that can only be accommodated or partially accommodated by a formula business, then we can accept that applicant under a certain set of conditions. So to me, the issue is the conditions and whether or not you can agree to the conditions, and I don't know exactly what those are. And if the city can agree to those conditions, and also the city attorney, so that we protect our ordinance. So I think, you know, one option, which I think Sandy's attorney, Ms. Fisher, presented is a viable option. I don't think it happens here tonight where we basically set out those conditions, but we could certainly give direction to staff and say, work with the city attorney, work with the applicant, come up with a solution of a set of conditions that we think protects the ordinance and accommodates Sandy's business, and let's move ahead. I mean, that could be one direction. Yes, Lynn?
Could I answer your question? There were conditions attached as Exhibit A on page three of the resolution for the planning commission. One of them was to work with the planning and building department on the final design of the exterior signage and building alterations. It's page three of the reso?
Yeah, Exhibit A.
Yes, and then there was also another condition that no flyers or video displays shall be posted in the business's windows. We didn't go beyond that. The whole point was that she was asking for approval of a formula business. So there, we didn't see the point of trying to regulate the inside of her business, to ban the use of orange, for example, or the keeping of a French bulldog.
Yeah.
Because she was asking for, she decided to ask for approval of a formula business. So she, at that point, she was like all in. She wanted the sign that said Next Home. And it, we haven't seen this mockup yet, but we knew how much frontage she had to work with. She had 15 feet of, of lineal feet to work with, which dictates how much signage you can have. So we knew the signage would be very minimal. And we gave a basic idea of what the logo looked like, but at that point, she didn't have the mockup, so.
And is the, is the sign logo that's on the awning, the actual Next Home logo?
I don't know that, but I'm assuming it's similar to this one.
Okay.
So it's called Next Home in the Valley. So it'd have Next Home and then-
Right. So, so, and, and I know each case stands on its own merits, but we can look to the past for guidance. The former councils have approved Curves, which was a franchise, formula business, correct?
Planning commission approved it.
Planning commission. And they had a sign that said Curves. I'm assuming there were some tweaks. Copper Fields.
It's not a formula business?
Not a form- Okay. So we have Curves. So again, we allow a formula business, but they have to meet a set of conditions. And I would just suggest that we put this back on staff and our city attorney to work out a set of conditions with the applicant and see if we can come to an agreement. And if we can't, then I guess it comes back to us.
Could I ask for clarification on what kind of conditions you would be targeting? What would be the purpose of the conditions? So that it not look like a formula business?
Correct.
Okay, she's asking for approval of a formula business.
Well, internally, a business can operate as a formula business.
Uh huh.
I'm talking about the exterior.
Okay.
I mean, is that confusing to you?
Yeah, yes, it is, a little bit, because that's part of the point of being a formula business, is you're entitled to that signage, and Curves used the Curves logo, and that's what she's proposing to do, is use the Next Home logo.
I think Dylan is on a vacation, and it was long planned for. And so I don't think that his absence from here is delivered, you know, to this hearing. But I really do want to hear from him, and I think if he was here, he might have been able to articulate some objections that he had that is what brings this hearing here, really. So I could certainly think that he could shed some light on what changes he sees that might be necessary on that. I don't know.
Well, I'm, so I'm only, I'm just thinking out loud here. If we gave this direction to staff, Dylan would have every opportunity to express those concerns with city attorney, the city attorney. And they either, the applicant's either going to meet the set of conditions or not. And then, and if it doesn't, if they can't work it out, then it comes back to us. But I'm concerned about further delays. So I'm trying to give direction to staff to move this along, to see if we can work this out, because I'm mindful of the fact that she's, you know, she's had for...
Should this prime time for real estate sales?
So if I may interject, in making this decision, council's duty is to really consider the mandatory findings in the municipal code, which is whether or not the, you know, use is going to be in accord with the general plan and any applicable plan development, whether it's in accord with the zoning code, meaning, you know, whether a use permit can be granted, or whether the use fits all other provisions of the zoning code, whether or not it will substantially impair or interfere with the development, use, or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity, and whether it's consistent with and enhances Calistoga's history of independently owned businesses, thus contributing to the uniqueness of the town, which is necessary to maintain a viable visitor industry and promote its economy, and whether the use, because this is a formula business, is resident-serving. So those are really the five criteria the council is tasked with considering. And pretty much any other, you know, evidence or discussion that may have come before, you know, that's not directly relevant on those points, really shouldn't be considered by the city council. You know, to the extent that the operation of the, you know, formula business, you know, any sort of franchise arrangements it may have, unless it, you know, impacts one of those potential factors, that shouldn't be something that the council as a decision-maker is considering. Now, in terms of developing conditions, and in terms of dealing with this appeal, the council really has three, sort of four options here. The first is to uphold the planning commission's decision. The second is to either modify or overturn the decision, meaning the council can either, you know, uphold the appeal and approve the use without conditions, or it can modify and approve the use with conditions. The third option is that it can, you know, direct, return this matter to the planning commission for further reconsideration, where the planning commission could also develop conditions and approve it as well. So those are the city council's options. Now, based on the discussion, it sounds like there is interest in directing staff to develop conditions which would be, which would come back here for the city council's consideration and approval. Is that my understanding?
Well, I would like to hear comments from the other council with regards to what I'm suggesting.
I've got a couple of questions. I mean, there were some legal terms here tonight, used here tonight by Ms. Fisher, but I have no idea what they mean. And I don't know if there's a legal distinction between formula business and franchise business. I don't know what an adjudicatory decision cannot set precedent. I don't know what adjudicatory decision is, and if it can or cannot set precedent. I don't know what land use consistency is, because a McDonald's sitting on a vacant lot is consistent with a restaurant. So why would this be any different? I don't know what you meant when you said the need should be set by the consumers of the community. I don't know what an underground amendment is. And I have not gotten a clear definition from what this franchise is. Are we talking about what it looks like on the outside, or are we talking about what it looks like and does, and how it does it on the inside, which to me is the true definition of a franchise? I don't care what the building looks like. We could have a sign or not sign. That's a physical thing. But if every, every one of these real estate offices, Next Home, does the same thing, and it does it the same way, that's cookie cutter, that's formula, and it's franchise from their own definition.
May I respond to...
Sure.
...that comment? First of all, you had some great legal questions there, and I'd have to refer you to your city attorney.
Yeah, and that's where I was going with that.
I'm not qualified to give you a legal advice on that.
No, that's where I was going to end up with that. I need to sit, or we, as a council, I believe, need to sit down and hammer out these legal questions. I agree with Michael. Let's put it on a fast track. Let's do it. And if it were just Sandy Tucker Real Estate, no problem.
And I have to say, I so much respect anyone who is willing to read. So often, the hours we spend writing things, and nobody ever reads them, or so we think. So thank you for reading.
I'm a nerd.
I hear you. As far as the, first of all, the franchise, or formula business is defined in your zoning ordinance. Franchise isn't. So that distinction is, you know, we're concerned with formula businesses here. That's the only, that's the language that we have to work with.
I need my lawyer to tell me these things.
I think as far as the, what's going on on the inside, just visually, obviously the offices can look any different way. There's no requirement that they be designed in any sort of cookie cutter fashion. Really, like we've said before, the business is the Realtor. So it's what she is bringing to that business, how she wants to set it up and operate it. There are no, even though that's a 40-page, something-page document with all kinds of terms in it, at the end of the day, it doesn't tell her how to run her business. That's up to her.
Well, I might disagree with some of that reading, because one of those paragraphs, it tells her exactly how to...
Well, there's...
But that, again, I need my legal to...
Right, right. No, and I will allow you to do that. She's already worked with the folks at Next Home, and as we also mentioned, the exterior, that's, those are things that she can work with. There's no requirement that a sign be on the front. So I think she's ready and able to meet whatever reasonable conditions might apply, what you can come up with. But it's really, the business is Sandy. She's, it's the Realtor that drives the business. The Next Home provides tools. So it's really different from the kind of cookie cutter franchise use that you're thinking of, notwithstanding the word franchise. So I guess we can't always believe everything we read, right?
Thank you for that. Councilmember Barnes, I just, for my own clarity, we allow formula businesses, but they have to go through a use permit process. So they have to meet these certain findings, and there's, there's five of them. So...
Where are you, Michael?
Just on the staff report, first page, required use permit findings, very first page of the staff report, number seven.
Okay.
Starting with number one, is the business in accord with the general plan? So that's a question. Is it or is it not? Is it in accord with all applicable provisions of this zoning? Will not substantially impair or interfere with the development, use, or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity? Number four is consistent with and enhances Calistoga's history of independently owned businesses, thus contributing to the uniqueness of the town, which is necessary to maintain a viable visitor industry and promote its economy. And number five, is it resident-serving in the case of a formula business? Now, I might question, and I think the planning commission brought this up too, you know, is this resident-serving in the sense that people out of town are either buying homes to come into town, or people are selling their homes to get out of town? So yes, they're serving the community. I'd say it's a small percentage of the community. But that would be one item that maybe could be challenged. But as long as the business meets these set of criteria, then we can, whether it's a, it is a formula business, that's not the issue. Formula businesses are allowed. So how they operate as a franchise or whatever, I don't think that's our, I'm questioning if that's our issue.
Well, as Fisher pointed out, there is no definition of franchise in our...
Yeah, right.
And I will sort of just jump in here at this point. Really, the council's consideration is whether it's going to be issuing a use permit for a formula business, in particular this formula business. So whether or not it operates as a franchise or not a franchise, that's really not the subject of, you know, the council's consideration. Really, the issue is whether it meets the test of what a formula business is. In the municipal code, the formula business means a business or use, which by contractual arrangement maintains any of the following: a business name common to a similar business located elsewhere; standardized services or uniforms common to a similar business located elsewhere; interior decor common to a similar business located elsewhere; architecture, exterior designs, or signs common to a similar business located elsewhere; use of a trademark or logo common to a similar business located elsewhere. And so, given the definition of what a formula business is, and the way that the ordinance is drafted, really, the general nature of how a formula business normally works is that it's intended to minimize aesthetic impacts on the community, and to preserve sort of aesthetic values the community may have about businesses that locate there. So the purpose of requiring a use permit is so that the council, or the planning commission, or whatever appropriate decision-maker it happens to be at the time, can condition that to minimize, you know, aesthetic impacts and, you know, related impacts that a formula business might have. So hopefully that answers that question.
My example that I'll use is we have an Ace Hardware store in town. I get advertisements from Ace Hardware all the time, you know, five bucks off if you buy $30 worth of stuff, you know, stuff like that. It does get me to come back on it, but that is part of the formula for Ace Hardware. But Mark and Tim are the owners of it. They've lived here forever. So I really don't see a whole heck of a lot of difference between a real estate office and Ace Hardware that has, I'll call it, the recipe for the business.
So the difference is that if they were to come, a new hardware store were to come into town, it would be Gary's Hardware, and they may...
It might be Gary's True Value Hardware, because they're a franchise also. I mean, I could associate...
But you wouldn't be able to use True Value or Ace Hardware on the frontage. It's about the aesthetics and the frontage and the signage.
And that's correct. And there is no legal requirement that the council impose a condition to change a business name. That's sort of up to council's discretion, because the ordinance does allow a formula business to be permitted with a use permit, which means that it can be permitted with a use permit with a condition, you know, to minimize signage...
Such as Curves.
Or, you know, exactly.
Okay.
We heard another example in town. What about State Farm? State Farm is a franchise, right?
Well, I think they were just grandfathered, grandfathered in before the franchise ordinance was adopted. So I, we either should, it sounds to me that we need to either table the item and wait until the mayor and city manager come back, give more time for the city attorney to review, perhaps meet with the appellant, and bring it back to us, or we can push it back to planning commission, and they can basically go through the same process.
You might get a two-two vote, because one had to abstain because this business is too close to the, well, it's a two-one vote to deny it.
Yeah, but one closed that business on June 30th, two days after.
So why don't we keep it at this, you know, since we'll have a full council, we'll keep it here instead of the planning commission? That probably makes more sense.
I would think that's better, and we can...
If it's okay.
Sit down with legal and find out questions or some answers to my questions, and perhaps we can come to some...
So we'll get this re-agendized, we'll push it back, we'll try to, we'll get on it ASAP.
What's the first meeting date in...
August 7.
August 7?
August 7.
And Dylan's back?
End of July.
And, and maybe we can get this worked out.
Could I just again ask for some guidance? Is the goal to make it not look like a formula business to the public? Is that the goal of the conditions, so that we know what it is we're supposed to be discussing with the appellant? Because my understanding is she wants, if she's going to be a formula business and go through this and get a use permit, she wants a sign that says Next Home on it, albeit a modest sign because of her frontage. I just, again, like some more guidance as to what we would be negotiating exactly, and whether in fact she's willing to negotiate.
Right.
Are you required to wear a certain color blazer when you're going around, you know, or...
Or a tie?
Name tag, naturally, but...
You can, yeah, use the microphone. Do I have to...
Is that okay?
We're good?
Okay. I just wanted to comment on a few things that Mr. Barnes seems to be, that you noticed in the franchise agreement. And I can't remember all of them that you said, but they had to do with marketing tools, and they had to do with branding requirements. The branding requirements for Next Home, there's a couple of things. We have a trademark logo. So if you're going to use it, you have to use it right, and it has to use the trademark. It has to be the right color. It has to be, they lay them out, so it doesn't get distorted. So it looks the same. It's not, you don't have to use that trademark anywhere. Most of it's about the little orange dog. I don't know if any of you have seen the little, the logo. There's a little, there's a little orange dog. So a lot of it's about that. It's about the colors. If you, there's the little orange dog. He goes in the front yard next to the yard sign, and it's all about Luke, the little, the little orange dog. So the brand, those branding requirements have only to do with, if you get a sign made, anything to make sure that the colors are appropriate, that you're using the right color scheme, that the right logo or font is used, which is why when it mentions vendors, as far as signs or, and this is the only thing that's really consistent throughout the business, is that if you go to any Next Home, you will get the same business card, because they want to make sure they're consistent, that you're not a Century 21 when you go in, and there's 25 different business cards within them. So they, they don't take everybody that comes to them. You have to have proven record. So that's part of being in the club. I think you want to call them a club of Next Home. And they want that consistency there. They want that... And they want that consistency there, they want that quality there, and that's the only reason that there is a requirement at all about that. If you want to put Luke on something, you just have to make sure you go to a vendor that's going to do it appropriately, so they don't have him trashed all over town.
And is that required on the storefront? Like, in the windows, on the, your sign, is it required that you have the sign and the logo in the sign?
Nothing is required. The only thing that is required as far as decor goes in the entire agreement with Next Home is that they like you to have one wall somewhere in your office that has one of the different Next Home wallpapers on it. That's the only design element that is consistent throughout the different Next Home offices. In my case, they're willing to be flexible, because I saved that mural, and it really looks bad next to the mural of that wallpaper, so if I did have it, it would be very small, and it would be appropriately placed, because I don't like how it looks budding up to that.
So, again, on the awning, it says "Next Home." So, if we said that you can't have anything out front that says "Next Home," that's something that you can live with?
Yes, actually, as I drove through Middletown today, I, I forgot to stop and take a picture, because she has a similar awning in front, and it just says "Real Estate." She has a sign above it that comes out into the, to the street, like a hanging sign that says "Next Home," but her awning only says "Real Estate." And that's what I had originally agreed to do, was just do generic signs anyway. So, it is something that I'm willing to discuss with the group. And I just wanted you to kind of think about the, it's funny to me, sitting in the audience and listening to you saying, "We know it's Four Seasons, and it's fine, we don't care what they do inside, we know they're going to have uniforms, we know they're going to run and, and do everything similar in a formula fashion, as long as they don't look like it outside, we're okay," which is exactly what staff was leading me towards, was as long as you don't look like it on the outside, it's okay. So, I think that that's where the confusion is coming in, that some people are coming in and being allowed to do that, and, and the, the part that's difficult for me is that that is a food and a lodging franchise, which are supposedly, or a formula which are forbidden in the ordinance. Mine isn't forbidden in the ordinance, and I'm not being allowed to do it. So, that's, I just would like you guys to really consider those points as well, and that Curves was a franchise, and that Curves was allowed to use a sign outside with their name. And when we read the staff report at that time, and the conditions that were put forth for the Planning Commission, they just limited the amount of signage that they were allowed to have outside. So, I would ask you to also consider that as an option, that outside of the amount of signage that I would normally be allowed as a regular Sandy's Napa Valley Realty, or whatever it would be, that maybe you scale that back and do something similar to Curves, so I could use the logo, and then as a last option, maybe we talk about generic signage. But yes, I'm very willing to negotiate what all that looks like.
Couple of things. Reason I read off all those paragraph titles is to give the public the sense of a true franchise, and it is a franchise. I don't know if our council has read the franchise agreement, I just got my copy today.
He has it, I see.
He probably hasn't.
I do not have a copy of it, no.
Oh, I thought that was what you had.
So, I would like him, and your interpretation is probably better than mine, you've been through it many times, you understand the company. And second, secondly, the Four Seasons, it is my understanding, and I might be wrong, Michael, you were on the committee, that the Four Seasons was hired by the owner of the Old Mountain, owns the property, to be a manager of that company. It is not a formulaic company by any means, it is a, it is a management agreement, is that correct?
It's, it's still, it's still, it's a business, they're their own business, even if they're a managing company of the property, it's still their own, it's a business.
Yep, but they were hired under a one-time, one-off, specific contract to run that facility, is that not correct?
It would still, they, they still fall under the formula business ordinance.
Again, I need, I need some legal help, some advice.
And on that, I just...
I mean, I know it's splitting hairs, but I want to make sure we get this right for all parties.
I just would like you to think about on, in that case, that I'm not sure why that one's more palatable to you, just because they truly are a formula business in the sense that they have to do X, Y, and Z, because that's what's laid out, and every single one of those businesses you go to looks exactly the same. In a real estate business, it's not like that, and especially in, Next Home is no different. There's no, I can sell vineyards only, or I could just do first-time home buyers, there's so many different things that you can focus on, and you go to, from one Next Home to another, they're not cookie cutter, they don't look cookie cutter, they don't have the same amount of agents, they don't have any requirements to have more agents, they don't have, a lot of places will have minimums that you have to meet, we don't have anything like that. We don't, there are no policies and procedures that I am required to follow. In that sense of the definition, I am not a formula. In the only sense of the definition that you read, I have a logo, and we have some similar design elements. They're not all required items, we don't have a uniform, we don't have, I can't remember what all five of the things are, but I only fall into a couple of those, which I know still makes me a formula, but it is not a formula in the sense that the policies and procedures are directly mandated to be the same business to business. So, I think that real estate is so different, and if you could think of it more along the lines of insurance, or any other professional services, doctors, and those kind of things that actually operate under another umbrella, it's a little bit more like that, it's not the, we get some big discount because we buy in bulk, so that's why we are Ace, because we, you know, we get that, there's, there isn't that. I guess it's just the identity, so, anyway.
So, for direction for you, Lynn, me specifically, I would like to see generic signage, I would not like to see any logos, or colors, or dogs, or anything like that visible from the frontage. That would be a condition that I would want staff to pursue. But I think we should just defer this to the next council meeting, which will be August 7th.
Could I request that the council reopen the public hearing at the next council meeting?
I think you would adjourn it, or recess it, what would be the proper term?
You continue to a date certain, which would be August 7th, and, you know, the chair at that meeting would have discretion as to whether or not to open the public hearing again.
Okay.
And you're going to need a motion.
Because the chair changes, assuming the mayor is back, would that impact anything? Would Michael have to run the meeting again, or that portion of it?
No, no, the mayor could run that meeting, but in order to vote, the mayor would have to review the minutes and, you know, the record as it has been compiled to date, in order to have it up to speed.
So, maybe we give direction to the staff to have city manager feet, as well as Allen, Allen's representative, perhaps, perhaps the county or the city attorney, and Lynn, of course, to come together to see if this thing can be resolved in a fashion that doesn't have everybody upset all the time.
Wait.
Yeah.
I didn't say nobody upset all the time, but not everybody upset all the time. It's kind of like what Lynn can say.
City Attorney, is there, should there be some kind of motion as to whether there is a, you know, a consensus on the council that they're going to...
Continue? I think that they do need a motion to either continue it...
Or even to uphold or deny the appeal.
Well, if they're continuing the item, then, you know, they're making not...
I'm just wondering if Ms. Tucker wants to wait three more weeks and not know whether she's going to be negotiating in good faith.
Good, good question.
Is what I'm wondering. Is it, is if she agrees to, you know, no logo, et cetera, whatever we come up with?
I, I think that's a good question. Do you want an up or down right now, or are you willing to wait?
If I could, so go, I...
I don't think so, because I don't think we're going to address Jim Barnes' legal concerns. I think no matter, I, we have every right to defer the item ourselves.
Correct.
So, I, I think, I, I think the council has expressed that we want to work with you, and try to work this out, but there's some unanswered questions, we don't have our city manager here, we don't have our mayor here. I think it would be smart of us to postpone a decision. So, I, is there a motion to...
I make a motion that we continue this discussion, I don't know how you want it worded, this discussion till the next scheduled meeting, which is August 7th.
And there's a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the, the next, August 7th...
And that will, that will continue the public hearing?
We'll, we'll continue the item, the mayor will have the discretion to reopen the public hearing, which I'm sure he will.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for showing up, you're free to leave if you want, there's a few other items.
We have several other public hearings that'll be every bit as good as this one, I can, I can assure you.
Okay, moving on. The next item, item number eight, is a consideration of a text amendment to the Calistoga Municipal Code, amending Title II by adding Section 2.10.080, Director of Parks and Recreation. Who's going to be, okay, Oria.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, this item, before you introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading, to add some additional text amendments to our current municipal code chapter, which currently has our department heads in that section, which has the city attorney, the chief of police, director of public works, the administrative services director, director of planning and building, and the city clerk. And so, currently, it doesn't include the position of Director of Parks and Recreation. And as you well know, during the budget process, the city council approved the, or approved the position of the Director of Parks and Recreation, so we'd like to add that position to our ordinance. And also included with the staff report is the, the job description, because we currently do not have a job description for the Parks and Recreation Director, so we'd like that to be approved as well. And the additional cost is approximately $38,613 from the Parks and Recreation Manager to the Parks and Recreation Director, and those funds have already been included in the fiscal year 1819 budget. And also attached with the report is the employment agreement between the City of Calistoga and Rachel Malek for the Parks and Recreation Director position.
Okay, council, you have questions? Move forward.
Yes, this is basically executing the budgetary decision that we made about creating the Park and Recreation Department and promoting a person, Rachel, to that position, and this recognizes the funding of it, the budget adjustment, all of that stuff that's necessary, is that correct?
Right, and that is correct, plus it adds it to the municipal code, Parks and Recreation Director position.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, I am too. Just to clarify, I think that although this would go into effect immediately, or almost right away.
It's an, it's an ordinance, so there's that waiting...
Yeah, but I mean, it's within the next...
We've, we've got a couple of cheap paydays before we get your promotion.
I wasn't worried about that. I was more going to address the, the plan to make direct programs free to, I guess, everybody. When would, do you think that would be implemented? Next January, or something like that?
I believe the city manager was looking for January 1st, but...
Okay, because, you know, those things just don't happen overnight.
Right.
So, your first assignment then would be to do that?
Hi, we've actually already begun starting some, or implementing some free programming, we have a free tennis program going right now, we're introducing a free soccer clinic, just to kind of work out the kinks and everything before we reach January, and everything goes free, so we have started kind of moving towards there.
So, all programs for all citizens are free?
All citizens within the school district of, yes, the Calistoga School District.
I think we're still collecting the fees for the pool, right?
That's incorrect.
Okay.
So, adults can not, any adult...
As of right now, we're still collecting fees, but January 1st...
So, any adult...
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
So, any adult would be able to go to the pool and swim for free after January 1st, next season?
So long as they're within the Calistoga School District.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't make any difference if that person is worth $10 million, still will use, okay. I've had some complaints that we are spending money on people we don't need to spend money on, I don't agree with those complaints, but I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I didn't actually realize that we, that was a decision that was finalized. I mean, I, I know we had discussion about it, but I didn't, I didn't think we finalized any clear decision.
I thought that any resident within the school district would be eligible to participate
I think we left the rulemaking up to the planning, or the recreation director and the city manager to figure out things, and I remember using the expression, I know we're going to make some mistakes along the way, that's fine, we can, you know, this is a work in progress, and we'll, you know, we'll get it worked out, and...
I, I would like that subject to somehow come back to us, because, and in that setting, you know, I think councils are expressing their opinion, my opinion was that I do think there are some programs that should be charged, you know, there certainly are people who participate in certain programs that certainly have the means, and I've had similar citizens come up to me and say, you know, "Our program's full, and, and we are happy to, to give, to pay," and, you know, I, I just, the blanket, "Everything's free," I just think could potentially be problematic, and I just, my personal direction was let staff work it out, you know.
I, I do recall you saying that in the budget...
That's, that's consistent with what I just said. The nuts and bolts will be worked out between Dylan and Rachel, Rachel, and of course, the finance department as well, and...
So, I can have, I can have the city manager bring back a report and just tell you?
Just a report, yeah. So, we're clear?
Touching spirit.
Yeah, yeah, I think the money allocations that had been for everybody to have everything free, just a generalized banner, and then going to shape it a little, little differently.
You know, there's, there's going to be budget parameters, you have a certain amount of money in the budget for this fiscal year that we're in right now, so you stay within that budget, and you offer as much free stuff as possible, and it could be, if there's a demand that goes beyond what the budget is, that there is a, a fee for those things, but that would come back to the council, I would think. We, we're the policy-setting group, and we've shifted some of the nuts and bolts into the staff, which is where it belongs, and if they have a policy question, they come back to us.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'm fine.
Anybody? Oh, okay, so I will need somebody to introduce the ordinance, waive the first reading.
Did you open the public?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'll open the public hearing, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this issue? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, and if somebody wants to make a motion and waive the first reading, and then we'll have, have a roll call.
I will introduce the ordinance, and recommend we waive the first, or do we need to have a motion on that first?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's...
I read the title first, okay. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Calistoga, County of Napa, State of California, adding Calistoga Municipal... adding Calistoga Municipal Code, Section 2.10.080, creating the position of Director of Parks and Recreation," and waive the first reading.
I second it.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Aye.
We'll note that Mayor Canning is absent, thank you.
Okay. Move on to item number nine. It's another public hearing, adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 1.12, nuisance abatement of the Calistoga Municipal Code relating to the time allowed to correct violations.
All right, uh, vice, uh, council members and vice mayor. So again, another introduction to an ordinance. And, uh, we'd like to, um, request a change to the existing municipal code, Chapter 1.12060, item three, which provides a mandatory period of 10 days of notice for code violations before the code enforcement officer can pursue action. And this has been creating an excessive delay for code issues, including illegal parking, illegal dumping, and outdoor debris storage. So we're requesting that the timeframe be changed to a reasonable period of time based on the relevant circumstances, which may include the work and time required to correct the violation. And the, oh, the enforcement officer shall have the sole discretion in determining the timeframe for taking action to correct the violation. And also, um, the staff will prepare the uniform abatement schedule to include the city's code, to be included in the city's code enforcement manual should you, um, accept the, the recommendation. And I've got the, uh, uh, police chief, Mitch Selay, if you have any questions on, on this particular item.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And, uh, counsel, do you have any questions for Chief Slay?
Um, is there any potential for us to be put in a litigious situation? Because we do not have a date certain, 10 days, uh, to drag on or you're, you have an officer that has it in for me and that officer made me do something that's impossible in two days. And I'm gonna sue ya.
Unfortunately, there's always a potential, given the society that we live in. However, you know, the, if you read the, uh, what city manager Jillian wrote as, as far as the code enforcement officer using reasonable, good judgment, balancing that with the circumstances of what the work is, what kind of work it is. Either myself, because at this moment, the code enforcement would report to me, would review those kinds of matters. We also have a committee in place that has representatives from the different departments, from, uh, the fire chief, myself, uh, and public works, and someone from planning, to make sure that we are being reasonable in what we're doing. Uh, and I, my understanding is that we are going to have a, a matrix or a chart to kind of give guidance, so we have some consistency in, you know, whether it's a weed abatement or whether it's trash or whether it's something structural that requires a permit. And, uh, in addition to amending, to removing the 10 days, it's also, uh, addressing if the code enforcement or the issue has to do with demolishing a building that they have, you know, no more than 60 days, that we, we look at that going back to what's reasonable, given the situation.
Yeah, I mean, just playing devil's advocate there.
Yeah, it's, it's a balance between, I think, the way the ordinance was written made a lot of sense, but the practicality is when the code enforcement officer applies these, you know, you have 10 days, you know, to get compliance, and other 10 days after you give the written, you know, the written order to obey. Pretty soon, you're 20 days, approaching 30 days before you actually can get something done. And if it's a odor, nuisance, trash, I mean, that, that's a long time. And the citizens here, the community gets extremely upset when they contact yourself or me and they, they expect something to be done within a day or a couple of days and it's sitting there for a week. Uh, I'm sure you've gotten complaints, I know I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I think the violation too is what the nature of the violation is.
Correct.
As you said, an, an odor is something that, you know, can be there right now and then an hour not be there, and then an hour later, it's there again. So, um, uh, you know, we, we need to be sensitive to the people in town that have, uh, have issues and at the same time not be unreasonable with the person who's in violation and make sure that they can, uh, make the adjustments necessary. This does not take anything away from the fire code, in that, uh, issues of life safety and red tagging items and, and unblocking, uh, exit doors and, and like that, that's still gonna be in the fire department, correct?
Correct.
And, um, uh, issues, uh, electrical issues and stuff like that's still gonna be in the building department. So the, the building official would be the person that would have, uh, electrical issues corrected. So, uh, I don't see it really as a departure from, that much from what we're doing other than, uh, speeding things up a little bit where it's appropriate.
Correct, and the appeal process is still in place. So if there's a structural requires a permit and we're given, you know, you got three days to take care of it, well, the challenge is you, most likely needs a permit. And the other thing is that the work can't be done in that amount of time physically, may not be able to get done. And so if something like that happened, I would imagine that the person would appeal that, that determination by the code enforcement. So there are some checks and balances in place.
And the appeal goes to, someone says?
Ultimately, it comes to the city council.
Ultimately, the city council.
Yep, okay. Any other questions? Um, anybody from the public wanna speak on this item? Seeing nobody, uh, I'll close the public hearing. Does a council member want to make a motion? And on the ordinance and waive the reading.
I'll make a motion that we introduce the ordinance, "An ordinance of the city council of the City of Calistoga, amending Chapter 1.12, nuisance abatement of the Calistoga Municipal Code relating to the time allowed to correct violations and waive the first reading."
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Aye.
And we'll note that Mayor Canning is absent.
Thank you. Item number 10. Zoning code amendment to delete limitation for B&amp;B guest rooms to existing structures. Who will be taking on this?
Me, thank you.
Lynn Goldberg.
Thank you. Um, city currently has 17 bed and breakfast inns that are in operation and several of the owners of those inns have approached the city recently, wanting to expand their operations, either add rooms or just modernize their facilities or possibly improve the, the manager's guest residential quarters. Staff discovered that, uh, buried within the definitions of the zoning code that, um, a B&amp;B is defined as the rental of rooms are spaced within an existing structure. And that would prevent anybody from adding any kind of new structures, whether to add, as I mentioned, rooms or just to make simple improvements to the facility. Uh, we've gone through many, uh, amendments to the B&amp;B regulations over the years and apparently this definition, which actually has that, it's kind of a development standard that it has to be located in existing structure, kind of fell by the wayside and was never, uh, embodied in the actual B&amp;B regulations chapter itself. So we approached the planning commission, um, it was, it actually came as an appeal. And, uh, the planning commission agreed with staff that, uh, yes, indeed, it, the way it reads right now is that a B&amp;B can only function within an existing structure. However, they did recognize, um, that there is an ability to add guest rooms in certain properties, um, in certain conditions and that it would be desirable to allow that to happen in new structures or new construction. And so they're recommending that that phrase within an existing structure be simply struck from the definition. Any construction would likely require approval of a use permit if they're adding rooms or, uh, design review by the commission. And that would give them the opportunity to evaluate its suitability on a case-by-case basis, which is very important because all of these are located in, in residential districts. So it would just simply provide that ability to have new construction associated with the B&amp;Bs, Bs and Bs, Bs and Bs, B&amp;Bs. So they did recommend approval of it. Um, it's consistent with, uh, one of the goals of the city council on Priority Project Two, which is promoting and supporting existing businesses. So it would allow certain businesses to make improvements to their facility and, um, continue to modernize them, um, in, um, response to changing conditions. I noticed the first line of the draft ordinance is missing. So if you do entertain this ordinance, I'd just like to suggest that you add the first line of the ordinance you just, um, introduced, "An ordinance of the city council of the City of Calistoga amending."
Oh, okay.
Don't know what happened there. So I behalf any answer any questions?
Okay. Um, I will open the public hearing. Questions of staff?
Uh, Lynn, you said that, um, if we put this new language, or strike the language.
Strike the language.
Other than existing, uh, that would probably require a use permit and/or going before the planning commission? Is that, will that be written into the ordinance? Or is that just kind of standard procedure?
That's already, that's already in our bed and breakfast inn chapter.
It's already in, okay.
Right.
I noticed it wasn't in here, okay.
Right, and that's just because that particular section is in the definitions chapter, which is wholly separate.
So it's already in there.
Right, right. So it's very likely, unless it was very minimal changes that staff could approve that weren't, you know, that were minor or noticeable, it would, it's very good chance that it would go to, um, the planning commission as a public hearing and give the neighbors and residents an opportunity to weigh in.
Is there anything in the ordinance that we used to create auxiliary dwelling units that would prohibit someone that has a bed and breakfast going to his? I'd like to put an auxiliary dwelling unit in my backyard here and then all of a sudden it's rented out as well?
Well.
As a bed and breakfast thing.
Uh, that could happen under a use permit if they constructed an accessory dwelling unit. Any portion of the residence could be converted. And, and most of the residential districts, it still has to remain 50, 51% devoted to residential uses. So the ones that are in the heart of town, they still have to be primarily residential. So we would have to look at that if that was counting towards the square footage that was occupied on a full-time basis by the live-in manager and then they wanted to convert that to a B&amp;B guest room.
Okay, so we have, we have something in, in progress. So all of a sudden, we don't find out that we have five, uh, accessory dwelling units going in the backyards of, of, uh, you know, to be used basically to expand their business.
That would be a hefty, hefty price to pay to, to construct a wholly new accessory dwelling unit. I mean, they would have to charge a lot to recoup that. But that was actually part of the concern, is that somebody could go and just construct something like that and it wasn't necessarily part of the B&amp;B and then come in and say, I'd like to use this as guest unit number four. So is that now existing, you know, is it an existing structure? Well, yeah, it's an existing structure. Maybe they constructed it with this in mind, but that would be the workaround for this. So we felt like, well, that was, you know, that didn't make any sense, that people would go and do new construction.
We do have a, a mechanism that somewhat control.
But anytime, yes, anytime residential use is converted to the B&amp;B use, it would have to go through a use permit.
What's the, what's the, um, trigger point that, that takes the craftsman in to a hotel? From a B&amp;B to a hotel?
Um, it's that, yes, it is the number of rooms because, um, they are going to have 13 rooms and the maximum number under their old zoning was 10. And they wanted to have 13, so we actually, uh, rezoned that property to downtown commercial.
Okay.
So they will be considered a hotel.
Yeah.
They can call themselves whatever they want.
Yeah.
But they wanted to exceed the 10 rooms and that was the only way that that could have happened.
They, they would have different building code requirements that's a significant jump, tell. At least in the fire code that I'm aware of.
What, what about the reverse? I own a five-bedroom house and I wanna build an ADU. I'm gonna go live in the ADU and convert my five-bedroom house to a B&amp;B.
Well, again, it has to be 51% residential. The use of the property has to be, I mean, still a primary residential use.
So that wouldn't fit then?
Right, so you balance the 2,000 square feet of B&amp;B use against the 750 square foot residence.
Okay. Um, any other questions of staff at the moment? Nope, Mr. Epps? Papa, you wanna say something?
Have you been sitting here since 6 o'clock?
I got here late.
Yeah, he's always late. He missed the other hearing too, it was done.
So, um, anyway, Gary brought up a point earlier about building exal, this is exactly what, what happened was, um, speaking of the Pink Mansion, we are zoned for 10 rooms. And I don't know what the, uh, the date was, is before Lynn got here. Uh, we were at, I believe, 6. Nick Kite, uh, speaking to him, he was actually the, the one who headed up the, the group to go before planning commission and allow a certain, uh, group of five or six B&amp;Bs on Foothill Boulevard to allow them to have up to 10 rooms. And it seemed like it, we met for, I don't know, maybe a year. And it never came up that there was this 1983 definition that said a bed and breakfast was accommodation, she probably has it there, uh, for existing structures only. And I've been here for 25 years and I have never, previous staff, we have never heard of that before. It literally got buried. But Ms. Goldberg is pretty smart, she found it. And so, uh, what came up?
Just the center of it today?
Yeah. But, but what I wasn't a little bit upset about was this, was what Mr. Kraus said. A lot of people kind of skirt the, the, the rules. And they wanna come in and they ask for an auxiliary building, let me get two auxiliary buildings. Build those, then walk back into, to the planning department and say, okay, you know what? I changed my mind, I wanna make those into guest rooms. And by law and by code, I think Ms. Goldberg would, would say, we would, we would fit that. But my point was why, we don't wanna do that. Why, why go that route? Why don't we just be honest from the very beginning and say, this is what we wanna do? So in order to be honest and say, this is what we wanna do, we need to change the definition to allow not only myself, but other B&amp;Bs to, if they, if they meet the other conditions set forth by the planning department, that they could technically be able to build a cottage or a structure outside of their existing dwelling. That's kind of where we're at here tonight, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Bring it back to counsel. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Unless, Jim, would you, you want this one?
You're on a roll, Gary, you're in a roll.
Usually on the ordinances I do them, I don't know why. It's, I have an uninteresting voice, I guess, but. Uh, I'll introduce, uh, "An ordinance of the city council of the City of Calistoga, amending Chapter, oops. You handed me a different one, okay. Amending, uh, the Municipal Code, Section 17.04.085, to delete the requirement for B&amp;B guest rooms to be located within an existing structure. Z0A 2018-1."
I'll second it. And waive the first reading. I'll second it.
Okay, uh, we have a first and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Aye.
And we'll note Mayor Canning is absent.
Thank you. Uh, the final item here on the agenda is number 11. "Consideration of a resolution authorizing fiscal year 2018-19 Community, Community Enrichment Grant Awards." And, uh, this is under general government, it is not a public hearing.
So, I'll take it to that.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Honorable, uh, honorable vice mayor and council members. Uh, the matter before you is, um, there is some background. The city council established a fiscal.
is some background, the City Council established fiscal year 2018-2019 Community Enrichment Grant, and I'm just going to say CEG for short, program through the adoption of the Resolution 2018-034, which is attached. And they established a subcommittee to review it, consisting of Councilmember Lopez Ortega and Councilmember Kraus, as well as the city manager. The subcommittee met on June 18th to disperse, to, to talk about dispersing of the funds. The staff did, in the meantime, send out to the public, noticed that there was available applications for nonprofit groups and we received 14 total requests seeking a cash and in-kind funding amount of $93,730 for this fiscal year 2018-19. Two of the applications that we received were late, so they weren't considered during the, the discussion about, about the awards of the grants. So after June 18th, we met, they met and had some questions that needed clarifying. So when we received clarification, they met again on June 9th to evaluate the CEG requests and make sure that the objectives were met from the resolution. The funding grants requests were in excess of the amount that we had budgeted, so some decisions needed to be made on how the requests best were addressed by the, the five criteria, which is to provide services to the elderly of the community, provide services to the youth of the community, enhance the appearance of the community, expand services to the members of the Hispanic community and provide community-specific environmental benefits. So these three, these five items were, were the criteria, any one of these could have been met in order to, to receive the grant. And you've, you've got all of the, the applicants and the amounts that were, were recommended in front of you, I'm not gonna go through that list, it's quite extensive. The committee had to reduce some of the requests because of a lack of funding, but they gave a meaningful funding levels and established, to the established budget limit so that we did not go over that. Some of the funding was for cash, as I said, and some was for in-kind services. So no cash was expended for that. So if you want to take a look at what was approved, I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions? First, we'd like to thank Councilmember Kraus and Iris for serving. All well done. Any questions on any item?
Looks like a good list, you guys did very well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
They were very thorough and thoughtful.
I will move to approve.
I second.
I'm sorry, is there anybody from the public that wants to speak to this item? Jim, I know you're, you've been holding out. No?
He wants to be close to the door so he can be the first out of the room.
All right, so I motioned, Iris seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that concludes tonight's meeting. I will adjourn the meeting to the next. Do I have to adjourn to the corporation? Okay, so we, so I'm adjourning to August 7th. So adjourn the council meeting, regular council meeting, Tuesday, August 7th. And I will now call to order the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation meeting, oral communications. Anybody wish to address the council? Seeing nobody, can I get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. General activities, we have the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation minutes. We need to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved unanimously. The annual report of the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation, receive and file the report, which I believe we have attached. Any questions regarding the report?
I think we ought to get a full blow-by-blow description of this from Gloria tonight. She's been over there just far underutilized.
Gonna read all those numbers again? No, no.
Perhaps a PowerPoint presentation.
No PowerPoint presentation, I'll just give you, I'll give you a short summary. So once a year, I, I'll give you an update on what the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation has been doing. For the most part, you know, we, we continue to pay our debt, we do it on a timely basis. As you well know, this year, we refinanced two water debt services and two wastewater debt services. And of, of course, they go through the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation because it is a way to do our public financing. And so as you well know, we have 8.9 million in debt on those four issuance that we were able to refinance and it actually helped us to reduce our interest. And by doing this, we were able to realize a cash savings total of approximately 1.12 million and a net present value savings of $784,000. And attached with this report is just a debt schedule and what the new debt looks like. So that concludes my report, our annual report for the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation.
Okay, do we need a motion to accept the report?
I don't think so, the staff report didn't call for that.
Yeah, okay, so we received it and it's now filed.
It'll be filed.
Thank you very much. That concludes, I will adjourn the meeting until, July, that says July 16th, 2019. So that's the adjournment, next date. Meeting.